Okay. We should be recording. Hi, this is me talking to the YouTube recording. Hello, everyone. Hopefully, this will be helpful for you guys later. We're just going to go over a few questions that some people suggested in reference to the statistics exam. And hopefully, that will be helpful for you guys. Okay. So I think the first one we're gonna do is from practice exam question 2015. We've got quite a few from that one. And we're gonna start on what appears to be question 14. Yes, Jeff, you are taking dominance in this. All right, so lucky you. So we're going to, yeah, let's just, oh my god. Let's, yeah, okay, so let me share the screen on the left side. I have just tons of stuff. Everyone can see that, is that all right? Just gonna keep the chat open as well. Over there, everything good? Just making sure everyone can see my stuff. Yeah, all good? Okay, cool. Right, so we've got question 15 over here. Right. If testing for the difference between the means of two related populations with samples of size n1, n2, and n, which both equal n, so they both equal the same amount, where the variance of the differences is unknown, what is the unknown degrees? What is the? Blech. What is the number of degrees of freedom? Okay, let me bring up my formula sheet as well for this, because I've got quite a lot. Okay. So there's all sorts of stuff, all sorts of things and the stuff to do. Also, yeah, okay, oh my god, that's just stuff, things. Okay, let me get my. Okay, so we've got here the means of two populations. I'm just gonna bring up my formula sheet. Also, guys, a slight little thing with the formula sheet, like there were about like two formulas that just had a slightly off demarcation. Oh, this is the 2015 paper, James, he's calling you out. Oh, you made question 14. Oh, this? Oh, okay, that makes a bit more sense. Okay, you guys probably having trouble with this then. Suppose you have a null and alternative hypothesis of mean is equal to 8.3 and mean is not equal to 8.3. You take a sample of 30 observations, find a sample mean with 7.3 with standard deviation of 3.2. Which of the following is the most accurate statement about the p-value? Yeah? All right, let me look over this a bit more. Sample, okay, so let's just figure out what we'd actually be doing here. So it's a, it's a hypothesis test question, so I'm just gonna scroll down to my hypothesis test chapter. And we wanna test for the equality, well, it's not the equality of the means, it's the, it's a two-tailed test for means, right? And do we know the variance? Yes, we do, we've got a standard deviation of 3.2, so we've got that. And we wanna know what the p-value is. All right. So to find the p-value is essentially, if I could get my formula here, sorry if I'm a bit laggy, by the way, my internet has been terrible over the past few days. Essentially, the p-value represents sort of the, oh, sample standard deviation, standard distribution. Well, it says, it just said just standard deviation. It doesn't say sample, because this specifically says sample mean, but it just says standard deviation, if it was a sample, then it would probably say it. So which is the following? Yep, all right, cool. So we wanna sort of figure out the probability that, given that the mean is 8.3, okay, because basically the p-value exists when our null hypothesis is satisfied. What is the probability that our sample mean lies outside the acceptable interval? Or essentially that if, if the null hypothesis is true, what is the probability that we get it wrong, essentially? And here we've got just some values, that just like, we don't have values, we have like ranges, which is a bit weird. So the first one is that the p-value is less than 0.01. So the null hypothesis is likely not true. Like, this, this is essentially what I think it's saying, is that what is your confidence interval, almost? Because it's essentially saying like, oh yeah, what, where is, what's the possibility that you get it wrong? So it's like the confidence interval for this. So it says sample 30 observations, find a sample mean, this is an accurate statement. To be honest, this is kind of confusing. Jeff, did you get anything in particular for this? Just wondering. Also, I love how nobody else is talking, this is great. It's 0.09, ah, somebody else got it, 0.09. All right, so then the answer then would be D respectively for this, D. Yeah. All right, so D would be for that, so you would probably get, yeah. So you would have, if I'm reminding myself correctly. Yeah, so you would have 30 observations, so you could essentially do this test by yourself, because you've got the formula here for how to calculate for means. So you would put in, you've got your sample mean, there you go, which is going to be 7.3. So hold on, let me try just doing this straight up. This is gonna be sort of tricky to cram everything on one page. Someone else got, yeah, so if someone else got 0.0869, so it's all looking to be within the same range of 0.05 to 0.10, if that's the problem, problem there. So we can sort of just, yeah, oh. I hear noises. Hey? Does anybody want to contribute? Anybody? I'm just hearing like, in the background, everybody. So we've got, just a way of doing it, straight up. And then you can use the p-value method that you've probably done in previous work. In fact, I forget how I did my p-value method, to be honest, I'm just terrible with p-values at this point. So where was my assignment, problem set four? When doing p-values was in question four, wasn't it? Yeah, so you say, yeah, okay, got it. So you would do in this case, because you've got the sample mean of, yeah. So you've got a sample mean, oh, let me annotate here. I hope this isn't too boring for everyone, you know, I just like, it's going through questions. So it's a little on the boring side, I do admit, but hopefully it's not boring for everyone. So it's going to be essentially the chance of getting the X is larger than, what is it in that case? Actually, it's smaller than in our case, so the probability that X is smaller than 7.3. Oh my god, come on. Smaller than 7.3. It's sort of a normal distribution where you've got a problem, yeah, you've got the mean as stipulated by the normal distribution, which was 8.3. Just find a z value and plug it into the calculator for p-value, yeah. All right, oh, okay, fine. Sorry, I've just kind of, I've kind of spaced at this point. Paramvir, could you just like, could you like unmute yourself and then explain it to everyone else? Because like, I can't be the one person talking. Eh, no, or would you not prefer? Okay. Here we go. A bit of loud room. Oh no, get out of the loud room, you gotta have that. All right. Let me get my calculator out. I'll just give you time to get on the mic. Where the hell is my back on? One moment. I'm just off into the slides, all very fast. All right. You good? Oh no. What's up? Look at the z realization.
Go.
Yay. Hi.
Yeah, you just calculate the z value, put it in the calculator for the middle tail, the one minus that, and you get a p-value.
Yeah, so you've got z value by, I assume you've just put the, you got the normalized value, right? So you got the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so that's going to be, hold on, let me just write this out. So the z value is essentially equivalent to.
Yeah, I mean, I mean t-value, I mean t.
T?
Yeah, you got a sample.
Oh yeah, because it's, well, it's like, hold on, let me just check, check that. T-value, all right, fair enough, let me just go back.
Same thing though.
Formula sheet, what?
It's basically the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much the same thing, but it's a, gotta be careful here. Jeff is saying here that the Markov scheme uses a t-distribution since we don't know the variance. See, the thing is like, it says here that the standard deviation is 3.2, which I would assume be known variance. Yeah, because it doesn't seem like it's sample, it seems like it's standard deviation, and it says it there, right? It would be sample standard deviation. Eh? I'm just hearing like, just like whispers in the background, as people are just like coming on and unmuting themselves immediately, this is great. So, yeah. So you're going for z value, okay, so let's just, let's just see what happens if we do the z value. So the z value is, if I'm remembering correctly, that minus the mean, step by the that, and then you've got the that minus the, okay. So the z value for this is going to be, I'm just gonna write that on my formula sheet. That's gonna be 7.3 minus 8.3 over the 3.2 divided by the root 30. Is that all good for everyone? Yes, hopefully it is. Oh, hi Carla, you can, you can like turn your video on if you want. Carla's one of the equal reps, guys.
Yeah, hold on, I'm just gonna get my phone ready, one sec.
I had, now I'm back up, it's great. So we have 7.3 minus 8.3 on that one, divided, so that's negative one. And then it's gonna be divided by the negative, no, it's not gonna be divided by negative, it's gonna be divided by 3.2 divided by root 30. Bye bye. No, I didn't minus there accidentally, hold on. Yeah, so I'm getting a negative 1.711632902. And then you can use that to sort of, if I'm using, thinking correctly, yeah. And it's two tails, you can work out the p-value by using the table, multiplying it by two, yeah. So you can just sort of plug that back in, I can just use this in another way. But yeah, I'm just gonna put that value into my normal distribution there, that is underneath. Specifically the value you're putting there, so that's the answer. Cool, and then everything underneath is just negatives. And I'm getting, yeah, so I got 0.434, and then you double that, you get 0.8. Oh, hi Carla. See you.
Hey.
Hey, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
I am tired, very tired, and I assume everyone else is, here is as well, yay. Yeah, so the, hold on, I need to span the screen, there's everyone. So you had some questions as well, didn't you? So we're gonna.
Yeah, I did.
I have tons of questions I've gotta go through. Actually, there was another one mentioned in the chat. 2019 exercise seven, we might go over that one now, is that all right, everyone? Yeah? It's just, I really know, now I know how to lecture this, like nobody talks as well. Oh god, that's great, okay, so let's go, yeah, where was the, where was my file? It must be here. Yes, everyone's cool, cool, thanks guys, oh my god, it's just I have to manage everything. Yeah, hopefully you guys, have all you guys like gone back for Christmas yet? Or are you like already are still here, or what's the deal? Hey, Lou, huge fan, thank you, thanks. Hey, some people are still here, I guess I'm not all entirely alone. Hey, some people are abroad, you know, tons of stuff, tons of stuff is happening. Right, so let's go, what was it, it was 2019 exercise seven, wasn't it? Okay. I'm gonna have the solutions open as well, because I'd like to cheat. Let's, here it is, okay, let me just erase all that kind of stuff, where's this? Oh my lord. Just managing everything here. Okay, right, so number seven, you guys said, okay, right. Suppose the likelihood of someone who access, who access a particular online store, I assume accesses, a particular online store website will purchase an item is 0.1. If the website has 200 people accessing it the next day, what is the probability that 20, less than 24 customers will make a purchase? I think I've gotta read that again. Right, so this seems to be a probability question fundamentally. I just need to figure out what probability distribution we're using here, is especially the problem here.
I think it looks like Poisson, maybe?
It does look like Poisson, doesn't it? So, but the probability that, yeah, the likelihood that someone accesses a particular online store, I don't know, it kind of looks like binomial as well. Yeah, it's, yeah, because it's got a probability there, right? So if, if we have like a mean, but it would be binomial in this case, I think.
Yeah.
So if it's a binomial with probability of 0.1, let me go back to my binomial formulas. Binomial, where's the binomial gone? Why is my page lagging, I'm not liking it, are people looking at it? Okay, where is everyone? Okay, cool. So.
People are saying that it doesn't look like binomial.
It's not binomial, hold on, let me check the answers then. What's going on? Hold on, I need to slim down the people, need to check here. What is it saying? Oh, it looks like normal. Oh, it's a normal approximation sort of thing. Okay, hold on, let me just read this. N is large, yeah, N is large. Oh, I'll be using, oh, okay, given the probability, the standard normal distribution. Right. Okay, then it's saying eight, okay. I need to be fundamentally here, I, I'm just looking at this, and I'm just like, oh yeah, looks fairly, yeah, it is definitely normal. So you've got a normal distribution, which is sort of just roughly approximating binomial here. So with a normal distribution, you have, let me clear that. You would have something that looks like np for the mean, and then you've got, what is that? np1 minus np, 1 minus p, I believe that's it. And then you've got, what's those things? Yeah. We find the probability that normal. I am wiped, it's just like, dear lord. This is given the probability that a sample variable has its most value 24, which from the tables, possibly that. To be honest, I'm not really using tables that much these days. How many people are using tables? Just wondering, actually.
I only use tables, I use tables quite a lot.
Using all the, just the tables, yeah, fair enough, because I'm using my calculator these days. Yeah, so X is approximately. Right, normal, so np, as stated by this, is just 200 times the probability, so we've got, that is 20, yeah. So we've got 20 people, and then the problem, N, the N times, so that was what? Yeah, so we've got np, so 20 times the 0.9 as well, which is going to be 18, right? So it's 20 pick 18. And then if we just calculate that, you get, what was that? Binomial CD, right? Binomial CD with variable, no, that's, why did I pick Poisson? Yeah, so it's a binomial cumulative distribution, right? Yeah? I think it is. So you've got a number of success of 18 with a probability of 0.1. And you expect that you've got 20 trials with 18 people. No doubt. What happened there? How's it go? How did you know to use normal approximation? Well, you've got a certain number of people, right? You've got 200 people accessing something in a single day, and you've got, oh, that part had a possibility there, yeah, N is large, by the way. So you can only use this if N is a sufficiently large number. Normally, it'll be in the hundreds, you know, so that's pretty easy to detect that. Thank you, Paramvir, for packing up in the chat as well. So yeah, so you've got that large amount, and then you've got sort of a pick here. So yeah, you're finding the probability that you've got a variance of 18, and it's as most 24, given by the probability of standard variable. Binomial Poisson are normal, looking very similar answers, so it doesn't matter which one we use, yeah. Very similar answers, so it does not, I assume you mean different, mate. Yeah, I think N over 30, N over 30, doesn't, doesn't it count as large? I think it counted as large for one of these. One moment, I just need to check something, there's 30 in here. There's 30 match, what the? Oh wait, that was for another thing. Okay. All right, hold on, let me just open this a bit more. Okay, so yeah, it is gonna be 0.8264 in this case. To be honest, in this question, I'd probably go a bit more on impulse with that, because it's like, you've got a 0.1, a 10% probability, you've got 200 people, so you've got far and away tons of people. And then you've got 24 customers, which is roughly in the bounds of what you're, what you'd be expecting here, right? So you've got this sort of framework already. Now, obviously, that's gonna be over a half chance, okay? Because you've got over the expected amount, so it's obviously not gonna be C or D. And it's definitely not gonna be B, because it's not gonna be inaccurate. So the only answer that really works here is A, okay, right? Yeah. What do you think, Carla, do you think like you could work this out by impulse?
I, when I did this question, sorry, I'm just getting rid of the chat. I did it binomial, and I just did what someone mentioned in the chat, which is that it was the closest answer. I do that actually quite a lot, I sometimes I just get something really wrong, and I just say, you know what? Not spending any more time on this, just gonna go with the closest answer.
Sometimes I think you can sort of game things, though. I mean, in this, in this case, there is a way of, like, it's clearly not gonna be C or D, okay? Because your, your probability of getting less than 24 is just like, it's, it's gonna be bigger than a half, right? Because you're covering a larger amount, okay? So it can't be any of those last three, so it kind of has to be the top one. That would, that's what I would kind of do if I was in a rush, that was the main thing, and which most people will be in a rush as well. So yeah, so you've got that thing there. Okay, let me actually, I'm not entirely sure about that, I've gotta study that more. Okay, also Carla, you gave me some specific questions, which I'm now gonna go over. So I think that we're gonna go over that with the rest here. We've also got some of B1, I've got tons, tons of questions here, so many.
You have a question in the chat.
Yeah, oh, is that? How could you discount B, C, or D? Okay, so let me sort of just visually represent this, hopefully everyone can see this. So if I'm assuming that this is roughly binomial or normal distribution, I'm assuming it's following a bell-shaped curve, right? And we're assuming we've got a rough mean at around 20 people? Yeah? So it's gonna look something like that, right? If that sort of makes sense to people? I'm just gonna wait. There's a delay, there's a delay. Oh? Yep, okay, so that makes sense. So if it's, if the mean is around 20 people, then what is the probability that less than 24 customers make a purchase? So if it's like here, right, at 24, then this is gonna be larger than 0.5, right? It's gonna be definitely larger than 0.5. So basically, all of these are gonna be just struck, struck and out, because that just doesn't make sense, because it's larger than what you're expecting, right? Yeah, okay, cool. All right, apparently it makes good sense. Hooray, okay, so Carla, let me get up yours, what'd she say? Let me just check here. Oh, they're from the textbook, oh, okay, got it, let's go to the online textbook. Also, if anyone else has any particular questions, please send them in the chat, just so I can get to them. Just, that'll be nice, oh god, my login is on this other page. Yeah, question, 2016 question B, okay, we'll get to you after this one. All right. Oh my god. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to type quick so you guys can see the book quickly, but, you know, typing out a 28-digit-long password is tricky. Okay.
Your password is 28 digits?
Yeah, yeah, I try to be secure.
Oh my god, for a textbook.
Well, yeah, well, it's just the usual UCL password, right? Oh, you meant question, okay, so I've got two more as well there. So you're in chapter six, question 6.6.5, oh my lord.
6.39.
I'm gonna have to turn off my dark reader for this one, I think. Does that, is it, still looks like that, oh dear lord. Hold on, turn back on dark reader, please. So, are we in the 6? I can never tell where I am, no, we're in 8.
If you go, if you go to the top left, you've got like a little table of contents, and that takes you to.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
6.3.
Where, where's it gone? No, where's this table of contents, you lie, you lie to me.
I have it up.
Oh, I'm in 6 anyways.
All right, that's fine. Yeah.
Oh wait, no, I think I've got it.
274.
274.
The top, top of 2, page 274.
Oh, so it's here. Okay, wasn't that 6.39?
Yes.
Here we go. Right. Ooh, look at this, real well thing. Ahead of the, okay, cool, I've got three more in the chat. Okay, ahead of the 2019 Indian general election, a random sample of 100 voters is taken to estimate the proportion of a state electorate in favor of increasing the fuel tax, blah, 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 blah. Suppose that decided that a sample of 100 voters is too small to provide a sufficiently reliable estimate of the population proportion. It is required instead, now the probability of a sample population proportion. Dear lord, the probability that the sample proportion differs from the population proportion by more than 0.07 should not exceed, oh, okay, I think I've got it, this. All right, so this is a, yeah, so you've got, how large a sample? So this is just sample guessing, that's, that's the official term, sample guessing. So where's the, yeah, so we want, so should not exceed 0.05. So that means that the, the confidence level has to be double that, so that's going to be, yeah, answer is, ah, here we go, probably got an answer of 1,068. All right, so let's go for, oh, I've just seen that Zoom is running out of time again. This is the problem, when I have a personal account, I can't let you continuously do this. All right. So it'll be cool, guys. So I've got a, yeah, let's go over this. So we've got, yeah, by more than, should not exceed 0.075, so let me open up that. So sample size determination is gathered from, so this is gonna be population proportion, right? So it's gonna be N is equal to z alpha over 2 squared, and it has to be b squared underneath, doesn't it? And then it's, what is it?
Yeah.
It's like, it's something. Is it like? Hold on, I'm, it's, I'm in the wrong section, there it is. It's the variance squared, right? So that has to be that, so for, yeah, by 0.1, so we know that b is 0.07, right? And then the variance is, so what's the variance? Yeah, so population proportion, how large a sample, oh, I guess we can just sort of game the variance. Should not exceed 0.07, how large is a sample? Did we get a variance earlier? I don't think we did.
Yeah, so Thomas is saying in the chat that you can use 0.25, and that's what I have in my notes as well, but.
Oh, it's just a proportion, oh, it's a proportionate thing, isn't it? Yeah, so we can.
Yeah, I think you use 0.25.
Pardon me? Yeah, because it is a proportion one, so the max value of this is 0.25, so you can start to do that. And then the z's alpha over 2, because the alpha over 2 is, because it should not exceed the probability there. What is confidence level, does that give it? Isn't that like a 7.5% like confidence level? So it's like 15. Hold on. Just, let me just get the z value there. Pi is 0.5, pi is 0.5, oh yeah, oh yeah, for that, yeah, I get that. So let me just double check here. Use it my good old tool. Yeah. So for a z value, what is everyone getting for the z value for that one? Does it getting like negative 1.4639? So the.
So alpha, do you say alpha was 0.075?
It might be. Yeah, should probably be that, so if I'm using, well, if it's alpha over 2, then it's gonna be something different, right? 0.075 divided by 2. Is that alpha, though? Or is it alpha over 2? No, because this is a, this is a two-tailed test, right? So I'm thinking it's gonna be 2. So that's squared, yeah, hold on. One moment, let me do a test here, so if I'm doing one, sorry, guys, divided by 0.075 squared, okay? And then that's, times it by that, so 51, so one, where does the 7.5 come from? 7.5, because it's differing by more than, should not exceed 0.075, so we've got that value there. Hold on, let me just, give me a second here. Um, hold on, let me just give me a second here. I am just. I am rushing it. Uh, and then root that. Where's everyone getting the Z value then? Cause I'm, I'm getting like a, hold it. Where's the zero point two five? Okay, so. The thing is, okay, let me explain the zero point two five bit, okay? Because we're doing a proportion, okay? If we're thinking about the maximum value of a proportion in this case. So we've got P, one minus P, the maximum value proportion can take is one, and the minimum value is zero, right? But we want to think about the maximum value of the entire thing, right? And if you sort of think about what value this takes, at zero, it's gonna be zero, and at one, it's gonna be zero as well, because the other one's gonna be zero. So you can sort of see a curve like this, where the maximum value is actually at zero point five. Uh, the back, no, the maximum value is zero point five and zero point two five. Or something like that, because zero point two five sort of, no, tell me, the maximum value is maximized at zero point five. Where it is zero point two five for the entire thing. Okay, uh, because zero point five gets you the largest value of the entire proportion. Uh, without, well, not without, say anything, oh my god. Uh, okay, so it gives you the maximum value of the proportion. P, bu- bracket one minus P, close bracket, for the value of P that you put in. Oh, someone, what is happening? It's like, oh yeah, so minus that, what are you? Paramvir, I cannot tell what you've written. Doesn't look how it's supposed to. Yeah, yeah, I, it doesn't look very cool. Uh, what is that? Anyway, I, I, maybe you were trying to code latex in there. Um, but yeah, oh, I think we might be. Yeah, we've not, they expect us to work on the confidence level. Yeah, neither am I. How'd you get the confidence level, by the way, you guys?
So this question actually isn't one of the practice problems, it's practice problems five, and the solutions are just. I just no idea where they're getting these numbers from.
Right, it's practice from five, wait, where? I started just, uh. Um, so. Right, so I've got like the zero point zero seven five bit, but for a, a Z value in this case. It just seems very, like, how would you even get that? Cause I'm not seeing how you get it unless it's like two point something. Do question six point three eight. You know, guys, um, Zoom is limited to my meeting time, so I've only got three minutes left. Um, hopefully, hold on, can I just, Carla, can you see the chat?
Yeah, I can see the chat.
Could you note down all the peop- all the requests people have made, because this chat might die soon, and I might need to keep them. Yeah, uh, we, well, I'm probably gonna have to reload this meeting, you just guys need to rejoin. Uh, it follows me. You need six point three eight.
Let me just write them down.
Six point three eight follows, I'm not.
Um.
Okay.
Okay, twenty sixteen.
Yeah, okay, cool. All your questions will be answered eventually. So, yeah, so you've got that zero point seven five, should not exceed that. Yeah, so the alpha value, so it has to be like. You're doing question, do you, six point, oh, you do, there's another one that makes it more, makes, makes it more sense. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the question before is basically asking you.
Largest value that standard error, okay. Portion is there, so that's really, they're increasing testing taxes. Largest value of standard error that is this, of the sample portion in favor that this measure could take. Oh, wait, what? Dude, oh, okay. Oh, I just, I'm so flustered at this point. I have a sample of a hundred voters. Okay, oh, Evelyn, okay, you use first derivative here. Oh, okay, alright. Play people at best, yeah. Uh, so for, what is the largest value that standard error of the sample portion? Oh, okay, so it's asking for that B value. So like that, the start of the sample portion in favor of this measure, okay? Did it not, does it not give you the confidence interval in that case? Cause like you haven't really got one. You doing alright, Carla? You got them down?
Yeah, I've got them all down.
Okay, cool. Uh, just so you know, guys, uh, Zoom is limited to my meeting time, because like it's the forty minute usual thing. Uh, so it's currently giving me a minute left, so I'm trying to like think about how to do this.
Um, I have the answers up, so if you want, I.
You have the answers to this?
To this question, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Exercise six point three nine.
Read them out.
I could, in the next one, um, I'll connect and I can screen, a screen share, I know what it's called.
Oh, yeah.
And then you can like, help me understand where these numbers are coming from.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can definitely do that. Okay, everyone, uh, we're just gonna drop out, and then you can, guys can just kind of rejoin, okay?
Is it the same link?
This, yeah, it's the same link, this is my personal meeting.
Oh, great, okay, great.
Alright, see you guys in a bit. Just, just get out and get back in, okay? Alright, bye.